Open session with, well, actually we're in to meet with the pledge allegiance first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to item number one E, which is a motion to approve the agenda. Second is on voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Wonderful. We are on to item number two eight, celebrations and thank yous.
So I wanted to start out, and I hope I do this proud on Carla, a thank you to Emily Jonesburg, program manager at Rogers Behavioral Health. She is pro bono working with our social worker and with Carla on the Compassion Resilience Workshop for staff and her families. She is in, she is a training lead with Rogers Education and Advocacy Department of Rogers Behavioral Health. I'm just reading her little bio, proud mom of an active toddler. In her role at Rogers, she facilitates trainings for leaders in the nonprofit education and healthcare sectors. So she's agreed to come in and facilitate that workshop for families and staff pro bono. So I thought it would be really nice to shout her out and give a big thank you and send her a nice card. And as Ms. Bailey said, baby, it's a gift card.
Here, here. Thank you. Okay, and to be PTO and foundation update.
Can I do that from back here?
Either way, whatever.
What? You can come up here, just be loud.
I'm, I'm here for the PTO too, because Melanie says she couldn't be here. So she gave me a couple notes. So you want me to name address?
Oh, no, no.
So Melanie says the PTO stockhouse is going to be delayed until sometime in the spring when they can do something outdoors. And so it would be safe to do it indoors right now. And the second thing she wanted to let you know is that the PTO is working with both schoolhouses to set up some sort of indoor spring run. So she's very excited about that. Something fun that can be done so that kids can celebrate and run around. So I don't know what that's going to look like. So there, I pass on from PTO, from the foundation. If you haven't seen the things to date yet, we're, we're a go-go for May thirteenth for the spring playing on the Bavarian Beer House patio. So that's super exciting. We really need volunteers. My idea of party planning is like, open some bottles, unlock the front door. But this is going to take more effort than that. So we're working on it. So if anyone is interested in helping us put together the spring playing, come on and give me a call. Super excited about what we're fundraising around this year. We've got agreement from the district that we're going to fundraise for an accessible dance for the district. That's super exciting. It was important to the foundation that it be all abilities accessible. So Lindsay has been typing out a chairlift so that that way, you know, if you have a kid who's wheelchair accessible, wheelchair mobile, they're not going to have to take a separate bus anymore. We're sending a small group of kids to something. And for me, that's just a really big deal. The second thing we're fundraising around is teacher grant, which I'm going to be talking to school staff about in the coming week. So we really want to make sure teachers and staff know that they're appreciated, that people are working for them and trying to make their lives easier. So we're going to be fundraising around that. And then we're going to continue to fundraise for the family emergency fund. So I'm talking too long. Auction items, we need. Sponsors, we need. We already have three folks in our community stepping up, Dr. Murphy, a dentist, Nelson Dorma, which is owned, a restaurant owned by a district parent, Emily Tootrick, and Canine Therapy Department, which is owned by Ronnie Artero. Both have already stepped up to say we want to be sponsors or donors. So if anyone knows businesses or just folks who want to donate, you know what we're fundraising for now. We just are ready to celebrate. So there you go. Oh, last thing, teacher talent. We're planning, if teachers come out of the woodwork, to put together a teacher talent auction table. I know we got a lot of teachers with talents and side gigs and summer side gigs. So we really want to celebrate talent in our community, raise the money for our community and pay it back to teachers and grants. Okay, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, then we have item number two, two C, the school spotlight. And I guess we can just take, let Ms. Morale take it away.
Thank you so much. You know, it's always a pleasure to introduce our scholars to the school board members. This year we received the two GPA grants. One is 25 students from five to eighth grade. They, they were able to take a nine-week online higher level reading and writing program. So 25 scholars from fifth to eighth grade did that. Did they just completed last week their nine weeks. Each one did various projects. They are going to talk about it. The other grant we received from DBI was 25 minority girls working on her story curriculum to develop leadership skills, you know. So maybe hopefully we just finished, it's once a month, a meeting. So we just finished the two meetings. After the meeting, maybe I lashed the girls to art. Even if they couldn't come, they are going to put together a PSA video. I would be happy to share with the school board members. So I don't want to take a lot of time. I know I love working with our scholars and we became the Wisconsin Future City Champion again. So those kids will be presenting their models next board meeting. And we are also planning to have a STEM fair where every grade level is going to showcase what they have learned in STEAM basically. And there we are going to have the Future City Robotics and also currently I received another grant where a mentor is coming and working with our students to create engineering prototypes. So 12 of our students, including two of our high school students are working on this project. So all of them are going to showcase their talents at the STEM fair, February 15th from six to seven. Without further delay, I'm so thankful to all these scholars for showing up here to tell you what they have learned during this nine-week class. Juliana?
Hello. My name is Juliana Franklin and I'm in eighth grade. So first of all, I want to thank Ms. Morale for all her dedication into this wonderful opportunity that we all have.
All right. So to start off, in our nine-week online class, there are three sections that we can choose to be part of. I chose to be part of the future problem solver. And in that, I decided to work, to focus on women's equal pay. So why did I choose to do this? Well, when I grow up and when I have my own job, I want to be paid as equally as my other male colleagues. So without further ado, let me explain all the details. So in my section, there are three main things that we need to think of. We need to think of a problem statement, criteria evaluation, and a solution. So my statement is that women are not being paid equally in today's workforce. Even though the problem has been known for a long time, it still remains a big problem. During this course, I researched a lot about laws and regulations. And out of those, I came up with many solutions. But I've decided to share my top two with you. The first is to raise the minimum wage. Raising the minimum wage would positively impact all low-wage workers regardless of gender. However, since women represent the majority of minimum wage workers, the minimum wage would have the biggest and fastest effect in narrowing the gender pay gap and lifting women out of poverty. The second is to increase pay transparency. If you don't know how much your colleagues are making, it can be difficult to determine whether you're being compensated fairly. And so if we increase transparency, I believe it will help to narrow the gender pay gap. Employers can start promoting open, honest discussions about compensation within the workplace. They can share more details about how each position is being evaluated and what the criteria are for evaluation. So without that, I wanted to again thank Ms. Morale for this huge opportunity. But along with that comes the big challenge. I think it's that we didn't have a lot of time during school to work on this. So what I mean by that is after school, after homework would be the only time we have to work on this. And with that comes not being able to collaborate with my classmates and with my teacher. But and with that, I felt also very alone and I didn't have a lot of collaboration. But I remember in previous years, when we used to have some time during school, we used to do that and collaborate with each other and it would be very fun. But even with that, that I'm very thankful for this opportunity and I want to thank you for your time.
My name is Maladeen and just like Juliana said, I was part of a nine-week program. I chose to do youth advocates, which is basically helping youth find their voice and find what they're really passionate about. Through this program, we learn different ways that problems have already been solved. And we debate with people online about how problems could be solved more efficiently. I chose to focus on education and specifically in our school. I've noticed that in our social studies curriculum, there are some things that are outdated, I feel, and that are just culturally inappropriate. For example, our textbook uses the term Indians instead of Native Americans. And it's kind of disgusting. There's also some information that can be very questionable and has brought up some critical thinking moments in our past. To this issue, I thought of the solution of us investing in a better social studies curriculum so that everyone can have a diverse social studies curriculum and see themselves throughout our history. Thank you.
My name's Elijah Roberts and the topic I chose was water pollution for my nine-week class. I chose this because like water pollution everywhere, like without clean water, we wouldn't be drinking, we wouldn't be here. And clean lakes and clean rivers, they're just not nice to see. Like you get what I'm saying, right? Like it's just not like a nice view. So like two of the ways I put was like stop littering and recycle more often. I made a vote there.
Hello, my name is Vincent Balsarino. I'm a fifth grader. The path I chose was the Go Green one. I learned that carbon dioxide is the cause for global warming and climate change. Glaciers are melting because the sun, the sun's rays, they get trapped under the blanket of carbon dioxide in our atmosphere. And that, that causes floods, deforestation, and much more. A few ways that we can help put this to an end is by using less electricity whenever we can.
To reduce your carbon footprint, what do you do?
I took shorter showers whenever I could by setting timers and warnings when I have one minute left. Because that would, that would reduce my water footprint.
Four of our scholars won the DAR essay contest, Daughters of American Revolution. So one winner from fifth grade is Vincent. Vincent won the DAR essay for fifth grade. Ian, Ian Kostick won the sixth grade, seventh grade, Anil Cogers, and eighth grade was Lydia Wagner. So four of our scholars won the Milwaukee Regional Writing Competition. So their essays are forwarded to the state level. So we have our lunch on February 5th. Congratulations, Vincent. Henry?
My name is Henry. I'm, I'm also in fifth grade and I chose the Go Green class. And I have learned that in our daily lives, we release lots and lots of carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide is a greenhouse gas that causes climate change. Climate change makes temperatures rise and glaciers melt. We need to work together to prevent this from getting worse before it's too late. There are many ways to help. Let's all go green. Ways to help are like take shorter, you can take shorter showers, compost, unplug outlets, and also use reusable water bottles. One thing I did, I took shorter showers. But there's one thing, I also, when I wash my hands and take showers and brush my teeth, I always turn the water off when I don't necessarily need it. Like when I'm using the soap in the shower and when I'm, and when I'm washing my hands when I'm using the soap and when I'm brushing my teeth. So that is my experience with this Go Green project. And the end.
We are in fifth grade and my name is Oliver Waylon.
I'm Emilio. We, we chose to be in a group and work together. Our project was mental health issues.
So I'm just going to, so I'm going to start with what we discovered and learned. In the last nine weeks of doing research for our project, we learned that kids with learning disabilities and mental health issues need help learning and coping with their issues.
We can treat the help from, by letting them try something new. For example, yoga. Yoga can help them deal with their stress. We can also help by giving, we can also help them by giving them a safe space to learn and giving them extra time to learn. That can help give them the learning space they need.
In conclusion, we enjoyed this program and wish, we wish we had more time to work on the project in school and in class and with Ms. Morale's help to get more to talk about. And we prefer not to do this as homework. So just to go over it again, we, you can help by giving them safe space, extra time and extracurricular like yoga and stuff like that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Donna Wright. And just to begin, I'd like to thank Mrs. Morale for the opportunity to be here and be presenting in front of the school board. And I'd also like to thank all the parents and the school board members for coming out and supporting us. And so I'm in sixth grade and the topic I chose was healthcare in future problem solving. And so first, what is healthcare? Healthcare in America and around the world is a very touchy topic because different people have different ideas about it. What healthcare should be, oh, sorry, different ideas about what healthcare should be free for all. Because many people refuse healthcare because they don't have enough money. This greatly impacts our economy and our society because since many people don't have enough money, they get sicker and sicker until eventually they die. And so my steps were, one, get proper funding, two, get the community on board, three, go over my plan to make sure that it was perfect, and then put my plan into action. What I am doing about healthcare, there, there will be three sections. Serious injuries, middle class, and not so serious. So serious injuries being like, say you're in your workplace and you fall off a ladder and you have a very bad brain hemorrhage or damage. That would be classified as serious injuries. Middle injuries would be like something that's repeated. So like if you constantly are breaking your arm because of your job or your sport. And then not so serious would be like, it's like a sprained wrist or sprained ankle. And the thing is, people can move from like not so serious to middle class to serious injuries. And this will be free so that people don't have to worry about paying for healthcare. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Dean and I chose to do Go Green. So what I did to help reduce my carbon and water footprint was taking shorter showers, eating less meat meals, carpooling or taking the bus, which I regularly do, and I think driving around less. I made all my goals and I think, I like doing the course, but I would have loved to be able to do it here in school with my good mates. And I really liked being able to like communicate online, but I would have loved it a lot more if it were in person. And one thing I really liked learning about was like the different ways we can protect our earth because of global warming and such. And one way I think we can improve our carbon footprint here at school is teaching kids about how to probably use the recycling and composting. Their way just throws any of their traction there. And I think that would really help produce the school's carbon footprint. Thanks for your time.
My name is Elena Johansson. I'm in sixth grade and I chose to do Go Green as well to sign about environmental activism. So to start, we learned about water and carbon footprints and how we can reduce them. And my set goals were to take my shower from a lot longer to about five minutes, eating more local and vegetarian meals, carpooling or using the bus, and turning off wasted water. And we use, we use multiple improvement models to follow our goals. I learned so much on how to read, write, and respond. Also, I learned how to cause continual change and how to be an activist changing the world. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Isaac Lippo. I'm in the sixth grade. I also participated in Go Green. And we said, I think I learned a lot. I learned a lot about climate change, global warming, what greenhouse gases are, and how they impact the world. I also learned a lot about reading, writing, and responding to others. We, what we did in Go Green is we set a bunch of tasks for ourselves. We wanted to do little, small changes to change the world. Ones I did was taking shorter showers. That's definitely a really big one. But using less water, that's very good for the environment. Droughts are impacting a lot of places in this world right now. And people aren't able to get the water they need to drink, bathe, make food. And yeah, people really need it. Eating less meat is also very good for reducing the amount of carbon dioxide in the air. The carbon dioxide is bad because it's a type of greenhouse gas. Greenhouse gas traps warm air inside the earth. So when the sun shines like sun rays, heat, rays onto the world, they just get trapped. And that's how our planet, it's just been warming up since, for a long time. And we really need to stop it. Cars, cars also create greenhouse gases. So driving less will really help. And I'm really thankful that Ms. Morale invited me to do this and I'm glad I participated.
Everybody come and stand and like.
How were these children chosen? Are they part of the?
I just sent out a demand to the classroom teachers to identify kids who can handle the nine-week deadline. So I share the requirements and everything for the teachers and select assignments. As soon as they select, I contact every student first. Are you interested in doing this? Then if they say yes, then I contact the parents and say, your child is interested in this activity. And then that's what they did. Unfortunately, 25 students were chosen for this. And then some of them could not do it because they didn't have the full time to do it, you know, this year. That's what they were telling me, that we did not have in school time to work on this project. Because they did not want to meet any of their other classes. And of course, after the pandemic, they came to school, they didn't want to listen. Or they don't want to come before school or after school, you know. I know our school is, you know, deciding, but this is, this was the problem they were mentioning, you know. They didn't have, it was easy for me to go to school, the fifth and sixth graders, hey, I see that you did not do this, can I, can I help you? But it was hard for me to go and pull out the seventh and eighth graders because they had so much going on in their classes. And then I, they don't want to disturb your class. I don't blame them, you know.
In normal years, was this an issue? I mean, like, no, because they have resources. That's what I was saying. So we just don't have resources right now. Is that just because of COVID or?
It was a schedule change to increase math and math and P L A minutes because we have less minutes in our district. But I know that it's something that they're getting feedback on for next year.
There is surveys sent out.
You know, I just want to kind of chime in on that while you're all here. First of all, I want to thank the families, the parents. I mean, there's a lot of extra work too and a lot of commitment. I want to thank all of you children, you know, who've been a big part of this program and all that they've done. And also, by the way, just to give a lot of thanks and congratulations to the teams that participate in Future City, which we'll hopefully hear about more if you guys go to the national competition. Loss of the, well, the restructuring with loss of the resource room and then the re, I guess you could say reconsideration of how we do gifted and talented has kind of left Ms. Morale without, you know, a class period within the day to do this. And I mean, I just want to underscore, I mean, there's a lot of work going on. You're all tremendously dedicated. It would be nice if we could, you know, find a way to get that back in the schedules facilitated, which I think is ultimately really important. But, you know, and we're going to have a discussion on that, on talent development, item five eight. So I'm sure that people can stick around if they want to, although I'm sure the kids probably don't want to be around for boring talk on that. But I'm glad to hear that that's being discussed. The other thing I want to say while you're here, Ms. Morale, is this. The last thing I remember before we went pandemic virtual was the presentation that you gave in the public board meeting. I missed those. We haven't had them in literally two years. This is like the first time that you did it. And probably the first last one that you did was the Future City presentation right before the pandemic. It's wonderful to see kids front and center, wonderful feedback in the building and have these meetings. So I want to thank you for everything you've been doing. Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you. We really appreciate, you know, I can talk that the school board and my administrators, they have been so awesome. I can walk them to their room anytime and say that this is what I want to do, you know. I'm so thankful, this is my first district and I want to retire from this district, you know, because the support I get from my colleagues, from my administration is amazing. Thank you so much.
Some of you guys talked about things that you might want to change within our district and our school. And I would just want you guys to continue advocating beyond this program. We're here. The school board, you can email us and reach out to us and you can follow up with your teachers and staff. And I, I love this, this spark of advocacy I hear in all of you and just push you guys and keep doing that. Thank you.
And the other thing is that, believe it or not, you can reach our school board. Some of the people that are on this floor, they do this work. They do this work every day. I work for organizations that does women's health. I do mental health. I do education. And so if you want resources, even though we're board members, we are here to help you as well. Because this is why we're here. We're not here for your parents. We're here. So if you do want to learn more, there's, I have a ton of programs that are, I know Danielle does have a bunch of programs that you can be involved in and we will give those scores, those resources if you want them. So this is, this doesn't have to stop your education. We have, I know there's a big group that's doing Grow Green right now, teens that grow green. They're doing a lot of stuff right now. So, and they do go from thirteen and up. So some of you would qualify for it. So I'm just saying, reach out if you want to know. Ms. Morales will definitely contact me. But there are a bunch of things that if you really are wanting to know about. to know about some of those, I can get you to the, the particular program.
Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.
I don't get it more than.
You do.
Okay, okay, fine. I'll take it. Okay.
No, this is how it usually is.
I was literally almost crying.
I want students to do a dance, do a dance.
Okay. Well, we cleared out. So now we can really start to work. All right. Uh, that was two C. Let's go to new business, uh, item three A, was the policy work. And I guess that I pleaded to, we'll chig it to you to, Ms. Lupo, discuss that lead discussion.
Oh, policy work? I can present it.
Yeah.
Um, it has been brought to policy committee, but um, so anticipating this work is going to have to be done, right? Like this is something I think we've been talking about since I came on board was a need. So go through the policies, review them, add what we're missing, update what we need to update, make sure that they're um, compliant, that we're, we've got everything in them that we need. So we've been talking with Wadby. I know that um, Ben, you were at the meeting where he came and presented. Um, it got a little long. He was super happy about his policy work. It was his passion. So yes, you guys got the video. Um, so there were two pieces that um, and when Lindsay and I set my budget at the beginning of the year, this was a piece that we included in that. Um, so the, because we knew we were going to have to do this work. So the quick check um, is basically where they come in, take our giant book of policies, they go through every single one of them. They give, and then they come back with a report that we would, um, then obviously bring to committee or the board, whatever you would prefer. That will just lay out, here are the things that you're missing. Here are the things that like you urgently need to update. So just to give us some, um, so we know how to prioritize because it's so much work. Um, so that we're addressing the most urgent needs first. So that we have some kind of direction that works. So that's the quick check. Um, and then they would also let us know if there are anything in there that would be like administrative regs or staff handbook pieces. So like what policy, what isn't policy, what needs to be updated, what needs to be added, what are we going to say? Um, if you looked at that proposal, um, they do it at an hourly rate because obviously some districts would have more or less work around that. And the number, if the number of hours required to complete exceeds twenty-two hours, there's a cap so that it would be no more than forty-five hundred.
But they do the work.
Yes.
Yes.
So they would actually have, um, work with us to figure out a way for us to deliver all of our policies to them so they can do the work.
But then the PRG is thirteen thousand five hundred on top for the forty-five hundred?
Yes. So there are two separate services and the PRG is on the thirteen-five month for three years.
Yeah, one of them like two hundred and five bucks an hour.
The lawyers for you.
Oh, the first one? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't do the math, math feature, but yeah, probably because it's the lawyer.
Wait, no, no, that's, it says, I think, two hundred and five bucks an hour, some lawyer.
When I, yeah, when I saw that, I was going to see what we.
That's a lot of money.
At first check up before we went with the second part.
Oh yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, just to see if there's a lot of work, I mean, see the check.
So she was saying you have a quick check first and then decide on the next. Okay, but I have a question about this. So my, I, I watched the video to discern what I heard about what's going on. So the, what they do is they go through, they make sure that they are compliant or they're looking for like sort of legally and what policies we are missing, but they are not doing like, they're not looking at to say, this could be more efficient. This could be, this is, would be the inclusive equitable way to do X Y policy, right? No, that would be the second part. Okay, that's how you see the second part of the policy work. Okay, but the PRG, my understanding is if they find something that's not compliant, they then point you to something in the PRG and say, here's examples of how this policy could go. So they would actually, in the first part, get through all of our compliance issues, like what we have this compliant or not. Um, one of the pieces, and I think maybe it's what you're talking about, where PRG is that anytime there's an update to something, they're notifying you. So like if there's an update to a policy or a law or statute like over the year, then you get a notification. So then you go and find that your policy is updated. So I think that might.
So if they find a non-compliant policy where they say, you haven't updated this since ninety-nine or forty-three and the statute was updated in two thousand nine.
That would be part of the first piece.
But do they then say, here's how you should update it?
They would give you templates. So there's still some flexibility. So they might say, here's one, two, three different templates for that policy.
Okay.
And then we as a board decide which one we like and if we want to add anything to it as a district, but it would have all the law in it.
Okay, so it's not intrinsically connected to the PRG?
No.
Okay.
So this gives us.
It's kind of, I think you've talked about Neola a little bit. So Neola just kind of like gives you the template. They, you also get the templates with Wadby, but you just have a little bit more flexibility around adjusting it for like how you, it's not like they just handed you a signature policy.
So this gives us a framework basically to go back and evaluate it so that we're not just getting a dump of one size fits all.
Right, exactly. But then do they look at our revised policy? Like I read, I remember them saying or reading something about like, okay, so we take the template, but then say we want to go further or we want to add or do something else.
Do they then look at what we?
Yeah, that's part of the service.
Okay, yep, yep.
Okay.
I'm good with either, Tamika. I can do it.
So the second part of the service, I just.
Yeah, I can do, I can see doing the quick check first. I mean, it has to get done first anyway, so we know what we're dealing with.
What happens is just by per se, we, we come back and we have like three major things for that day. And as we go through our.
Well, yeah, I see that makes sense that, except that, because I'm trying to think about this in terms of timeline because then the next goal would be to be actually us looking at our policies and saying like, where can we input more inclusive language? Where can we make things more accessible or efficient or whatever?
Yeah.
That's sort of like the next step of the process you envision, right?
So I think, I think the first step would be like what's Mika saying. So you do that quick check and you go, oh my gosh, there are ten things we're missing.
Right.
Like we're out of compliance.
Right.
These five, what you said are from nineteen eighty-two. So we have to fix these. And then once we, once we get through the urgent ones, then we'd probably start going back to review for some of those other pieces. So if we, but I, but I can see what you're saying, like, I doubt it. I think there's going to be a huge long list of stuff for us to do. But I, I don't think it matters if we just say we're going to do the quick check first, see what we got and then decide.
Budgeted for the PRG.
But we can do it at any time. It's not like the page is going to change.
Okay, yeah, I thought they were, and if they're not, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we can do it separate.
But I'm also, also looking at the equity work that we're doing. We may, let's, you have to see what's going on with all of that at all in front. So I just think if we start with this one, at least know where we are.
Yeah.
So we can get a, a gist of it, but I don't really, you know, I, I don't have, it's not a horse that I want to fight one way or the other. That's just that, I mean, no, it's, you know, you know what I mean? I'm not going to follow my sword on this one. If we decide that they were going to use it, that's fine.
We could also get them all the policies and see how long the quick check is going to take.
Well, that's just my other question.
You know what I mean? Because it depends on, we have a lot of policies. So once they see what we've got, they'd be able to give us an estimate.
Okay.
But didn't they say like a couple months? Did they say a couple months then? I can't remember.
I can't remember, but so we can do the quick check uh, without subscribing to the policy resource guide.
Right.
So I agree with Mika and we should probably just do that first. However, yeah, that's like two hundred and five bucks an hour. I mean, how many hours?
It's capped at forty-five hundred.
Oh.
The work is.
So that's what I mean, unless, unless we, we get like a, a discount or something, if we do this and then.
I don't, I don't.
If we don't, then I don't, you know?
So I don't think there's any negative pieces during the first one.
Right.
Well, the update can be given to the policy committee.
And so once we get that report, we'll probably go to both, right? We bring it to the policy committee and then share with the board too.
Okay.
I'll just, because it'll come as a report that we can share.
So then, let me just ask this, just to make sure. So when we do the quick check, I mean, how are our policies prioritized? Is there something that they look at first or that's most important?
So they'll go through all of them and they'll prioritize them for us. And I've done it before and it comes almost color coded. Like these are out of compliance, these are missing, these are, you know what I mean?
So they will tell us what our priority ought to be considering that, so we're getting that type of.
The next piece of that is once we have that, then the PRG is what's going to help us go, okay, we're missing policy ten, twelve. Let's go look at these three templates for policy ten, twelve.
I thought they were giving us the template.
That's the second part.
That's the PRG?
So the template and second part to the quick check.
So you do need that.
Sorry, that's what I was asking.
I mean, we can see what, where we are first and then, you know what I'm saying?
That's like the website we put everything on, right?
Um, no, that's the board doc.
Oh.
So PRG talks to our doc, so that we upload all their policies on the board doc. And that's just part of.
That's what you're showing, that's where we can edit them.
Well, you can do, yeah, okay.
So if we need the PRG, so then update our actual policies, I would say, don't wait because we shouldn't be delaying updating our policies any longer.
But they're gonna, they don't start updating until after they do the checklist anyway. So it's one way or the other. I know what.
Okay.
Well, what I, what I heard in the meeting was, what I heard in the meeting was, they could give us the report or I read this somewhere, they could give us the report and the report could then point us to the template in the PRG. Yeah. So I feel like considering that at the same time makes more sense than like getting the report, but then hopefully we'll get.
I think what I was hearing Tamika say was, we, what if we do this report, we don't have a lot that.
Because it's a three-year subscription.
Yeah. So I hear both sides.
Well, we're going to have a lot that needs to get.
So we're going to get the report. Okay, we're going to, we're going to get the report and they are not going to give us templates. That's the second piece. We have to pay additional money to understand how to change them. They're saying these need to be changed. Here's why.
Do we have any sense if, and I'm just trying to figure out the timing on this because I, I guess I'm leaning towards the idea of doing both at once. But do we have any sense of whether or not our policies, if we change this? I mean, this could take a couple months to get done. It's going to be the end of the year and then we think that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say summer feels like really good time to do a ton of policy work.
Right, exactly. And then for, for the, that's exactly what I was thinking anyhow, because then we can do that work in summer. Uh, you know, we, we got a, a retreat that we're tentatively eyeing in May. We can go into the summer, do that. And we can update policies, you know, for that whole year. So I guess my question is, if, if we start this now and we pull the trigger now, um, are we going to have, you know, everything today? We do everything, you know, by let's say the beginning of summer or I guess what's the timing on this? Are we better off in order to facilitate us, you know, jumping into this in June, let's say? Are we better off, you know, saying yes to both things right now or do we have that time? I mean, it's only January right now. So if we have some cushion, I mean, I, I can see about the quick change maybe being the smarter option just to get the ball rolling. Um, but you know, if we think that's more medium, maybe we should vote.
I don't know that I have opinion on the PRG. I'm just, I, it seems like an incomplete service to tell you these need to be changed, but not give you advice on how to change them.
I guess looking at our book, I would have no words, no idea where to start. So for me, the, the quick check is really valuable to know like, okay, this is going to probably take us like years to obtain our policies. What do I need to make sure we have in place so we're not like out of compliance? What do I need to know that we're missing so that I can like really start plugging through and make sure I'm addressing the most urgent things first?
I agree, necessary.
Yeah.
Okay, one other quick question, which is, in terms of how they deliver the information, are we talking about one or two information dumps? Are we talking about a continued discussion?
For the quick check or for the PRG?
Either one.
The quick check is like a huge report, so that's kind of like one.
Okay.
And then the PRG is possible.
Well, the PRG lives in board, right?
It can, we can access. Yep. I mean, you can be a district to get PRG and that at board docs, but since we have board docs, it, it just connects, which also helps with posting that. And then they'd all be accessible online to the public, saving word out. So every time we updated a policy, it'd be in board docs for the public.
Was there a motion?
A motion to what?
Motion to, a motion to move forward with either one or two or both.
I'll make the motion to move forward with a quick check.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, fine. Uh, if, if we do this, will we be up for revisiting this in February?
Sure.
All right, then a further discussion?
Wait, 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 whoa, 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 what? We're going to revisit?
I mean, like if you can update on timeline.
I'll make an amendment. Don't waste too much time. I amended to do both of the things at the exact same time. We waste so much time going back and forth on stuff. So if this is what it's going to be, then I am amending your motion to do all, both of them at the exact same time and approve it at the same time. So it does not have to go in February.
So we're going to need it.
So I will amend that? And do you accept the friendly amendment?
Sure, all right.
I accept my own second amendment.
Should I do roll voter? Okay, good. Then all favor the amended motion to uh, approve moving forward with both quick check and policy resource guide bonus. Please say goodbye by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now on to a real dispute.
Oh, I know. I'm like, I think I want to go here now. Um, okay, so do you want to start or do you want me to start? I know that Ms. Westfall has brought in the past to curriculum, um, some of the rationale and reasoning behind doing a weekly early release. Um, mostly centered around professional development. We currently have like zero professional development time in the calendar for teachers and collaboration, um, collaboration repairs and teachers, collaboration vertically across school. Um, so just to build some of that time in for staff. So that's the main piece um, that we wanted to share with you. You have a calendar, a tentative calendar was attached to um, your board packet so you could see how those days would lay out. Of course, we did all the work with minutes and hours with both the middle school and the elementary school to ensure that we would still have some built-in snow days and some, and built-in time and plenty of hours and minutes to do the weekly early release. If you looked at the calendar, there are also certain weeks where we obviously would not do an early release because it was like coming back from Christmas break or the same week as the um, joint PD day with the partner school. So some weeks where we already had some other time, um, we wouldn't do that. Um, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit again to, what's just some of the highlights of what the, we had a really good discussion at the curriculum committee meeting around early release and some of the reasoning behind that. Just really that professional development is the strategy school districts use to ensure that educators continue to strengthen their practice throughout their career, right? And the most effective professional development engages teams of teachers to focus on the needs of students. So really this gets at the needs of students. That's why, the why behind this, that collaboration piece, that PD piece. Um, not to mention the PD that's needed to onboard our staff and retain our staff. So that's another big piece to this. We also kind of talked a little bit about what constitutes professional development. We went through a little bit around when to do professional development and some of the struggles that we've had in this district around professional development, especially when thinking about our elementary teachers. Um, they don't have the same amount of prep time that our middle, middle school teachers have. And then they also, they're taking kids to a special and then flipping them and then picking them up. So there, when you think about the time they have during a day, it's about, you know, thirty minutes for professional development or collaboration time, which makes pushing the learning forward and having conversations about students and how we can support students nearly impossible. Um, and then it takes away from their planning time as well because then they're meeting, you know, um, students and different things as well. Um, and then also just really leaning into developing some professional learning communities. That's a big focus for the district as well. Um, really thinking about um, our students and having those collaborative conversations. Um, and then the other thing too is some of our partner district work. So we do a lot of curriculum review work and then vertical work as well. Um, so we really don't have an opportunity with the two different school schedules and all of that for us to do vertical work with, with Stanford Parkway and the Stanford Glen Hills, uh, looking like, let's say across P L A, across a K eight span. So that's really important for us to be thinking about as a district. Um, and then the other thing too is really getting our paraprofessionals involved with this. Our special education staff has a really hard time attending some of these collaboration meetings because of different student needs. A lot of reasonings behind it and it's been really successful in other districts. Anybody, you know, would like to take a tour or have some conversations with other districts as well.
What other districts? What other districts?
Out there are doing this, or like. I'm. On Shorewood, and on Lake Falls, Elm Brook. Pretty much, pretty beautiful. So I'll stop at the first piece for questions on that.
I am, yeah.
So. Tell me if I'm. Didn't we have this set up before? Or we had, or we, release days?
Not that I know of.
Yeah.
Not since, not since I've been in this district. We've had extended hours, which that pushes teachers, you know, that you said in their contract.
I could have swore to you, it was home on a Wednesday. Yeah, we did.
Not since.
Like, weekly?
Yeah.
In the job.
So a lot.
Like, once a month or something?
So seven.
Oh, it was like every. For the last seven years, we didn't have.
Okay, it was, I don't know, I don't remember that one. That it was every third week that they had. I'm just asking because that was a huge thing with parents and picking them up and having their kids having to deal with stuff. And they preferred that, and I think, if I recall correctly, we went to having days, like putting it so we had more full days off than having those half days. So it would be like the kids would go, and it was easier for parents to do a whole day than trying to get their kids on a half day. Or, so, I just, I just remember that, I, am I right in remembering that? Okay, that's all, I, I just, and that was one of the biggest concerns was, um, half day and getting their kids or having to.
It could, it could be seven years ago, cause I just went here too, so it could have been longer than I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But I, I know we did it.
Right, and then my, I remember they did it the eighth or year, and today it's only five years out, so it could have been longer. But one of those, I'm just bringing up the fact that one of the biggest things is it sounded great when we did it. And then parents had an issue when we did it, you know, so I just would, um, look at the survey or see if the survey says that they prefer half days or like a full day every other week, or whatever it is, the, the amount of time. Because it's more so, like, I can deal with some of them to deal with daycare for a day, or if we have a Monday off or a Tuesday off, but having to pick their kid up every single week on a Wednesday, like, because it's a half day. I'm just saying, please look into that.
Yeah.
That was a concern back then, I know it was.
And with early release, I'm guessing we do, we wouldn't look at a half day, we'd look at.
Yeah, it would just be two hours. We're looking at two hour early release. But that's still, that's even, that's almost even worse, because if you're a parent, you might get your kid at lunch and then get him back. But I'm just saying.
Yeah, I think the hard part is, if you really want teachers to get into patterns of functioning and professional learning communities and learning to look at data, and learning to use rubrics, and learning to really inform instruction based on those pieces, it's really tough to have to say, once a month, we're gonna get together and talk about them.
I get that. I'm not saying that yes or no, but I.
Yeah, no, I'm just bringing that up.
Look at, yeah. The kids and the parents that have to pick them up as well. So it's not, it's around.
That barrier.
Yeah, I just.
We provide as a district, whether it's after, you know, school care or, you know, some of those things.
Daycare is to make sure that they can accommodate the, those times and whatnot.
Yeah.
And I assume the buses would accommodate, you know, the regular.
Yeah, that's a huge point, I think, for sure.
I do wanna point out one thing, which is that, um, on the one A early release days for professional development and collaboration. It says September fourteenth and twenty-third, but it says none September seventh and twenty-eighth due to being off Labor Day in Rosh Hashanah. But Rosh Hashanah is actually the twenty-sixth.
It's just that it was that week. So we wouldn't ask parents if there's already a day off that week to do an early release.
That wasn't true.
Yeah, so some of the ones that say not that week is because there's already something on.
I got it, because, right. Yeah, whichever you're saying, these dates are dates that we already have planned.
Yeah. That's right.
So.
Go ahead.
Are we also approving professional development days in the summer?
Well, we haven't, that's not even planned yet.
Okay, cause, well, it's the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty, it's a great calendar, so.
Yeah, so basically, what you have, what's been approved, so the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar was approved with Dr. Moser in April, but that was just holidays. So it was to align with the partner districts, and it was just first day of school, holiday break, Easter break. So that's the template we use, so it just kind of has some stuff in it, do you know what I mean? But it's not the staff calendar.
Okay.
So the only thing that's been approved is the family calendar with holidays. So we're looking at making adjustments now for staff calendar. So what would this mean? Oh, go ahead.
Right, but it's staff, when do they, like, so we, we, we don't know when they would start work, huh?
No, we haven't planned that yet. It depends on what professional development.
Yeah, just on, uh, early release days.
Yeah, we're just looking at early releases.
Okay. Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, K four PM class, what in, do they come in for a short day or do they have no school? So basically, it's funny you mention that, because that piece, along with anything prepared teacher conferences, we're gonna have to do some work with K four. Because their schedule is just a little different, because they do have the AM and the PM, um, typically. Like, I'm not sure, I mean, we could even alter, I don't know, like, I think we'd wanna, survey families and. Yeah, and there's, we can put multiple options on, on the table for that. So we could have an option where they don't have school that day, we get an optional where we may alternate, like this, this Wednesday AM group, next Wednesday PM. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, so that it's just one group, but I think we would talk to staff and see what would make the most sense with the K four teachers.
So you.
Okay. Others have had, um, condensed schedules or, or ram, ramble. And they come for a shorter time. I'd wanna talk to the fourth K teachers to see what would seem the most consistent program construction.
Have you guys talked to the teachers about this?
We talked to the association.
Okay, and what do they think?
They want professional development.
Okay.
So, cause right now they're doing extended hours, so they're staying like once, not even once a month. Well, and a lot of this came out of just the work we did last year with the pandemic, having that extra day.
Right.
To meet, to plan, to talk about students, and then there was just such a high value put on that, and to continue that process. Um, just would be very supportive for, um, lesser teachers.
So what, what time did they get during the pandemic?
Fridays were asynchronous days.
And so they put value in that, right?
Yeah, that was a full day, so we're talking about two hours every week essentially for, we're trying to add in the staff calendar.
Was there any discussion about this actual mental health days, like, like time off, or will it all be spent sort of doing PD or collaborative?
I think that's something we'll map out with the principles, and I think it'll come out of our strategic plan. So I think that's valuable too, um, to talk about that, like, maybe there are times where it's just team time or planning time where we're not, like you said, like at them with.
Right.
Everything, or.
Right.
I think that's definitely valuable too. I think the positive of something like this too is it, it gives them back their prep time during the day, right? Cause we're taking that, we're utilizing for collaboration time and PD time. Um, so there, that's kind of pulled, and there's meetings, you know, before school or after school, where this is a consistent time for, you know, staff to focus on, you know, the task at hand.
Um, would this plan be impacted, cause we're still, we've yet to consider possibly, like, our start times changing and our transportation situation. So if we were to, I think you're asking us to approve this today.
It would just adjust, so if we changed our, so it's based on a two-hour early release, it would just adjust with whatever the end time of the day was. So if we did change start end times?
I, yeah, I'm just talking hard time, I definitely like support this, the, the reasoning behind it and wanting to get this time, and it sounds like other districts are doing it. I, um, I, like, not knowing what the K four would happen, it would be hard, like, not knowing what that schedule looks like. I'm wondering, is there like a rush to approve this right now, especially like given that we're having the transportation and transportation conversation in like a month or two months? Is it, that we wanna give families notice, or like, what is?
So there's definitely wanting to get families notice.
This could change possibly.
Yeah, there's definitely wanting to get families notice, I don't know. I would think we would wanna make a decision about doing a weekly early release, that might happen before we know if we changed our time. But there's probably some space in between those two, you know what I'm saying, like? So, yeah, it doesn't have to be, like, if we want some more details and more information, we can do that, bring it back.
My only concern is, uh, and I think I said this last time, is this is a lot of days, and personally, if, you know, I, the way I look at this is, you know, it would potentially, uh, it could impact how much content they cover. Um, and so that just is a concern.
So I would push back and say that the content's gonna actually be covered in a better, more solid way, because teachers have time to collaborate. Look at their data, inform their instruction with their data, and then have some common formative assessments and things going on. And it doesn't mean that we would have to reduce, what if, didn't we look at it, like, the minutes per core was a very small reduction on those days, because it's only two hours? So it was just like minutes.
Okay.
When you look at the overall schedule. Yeah, yeah.
So when you've considered how this will like impact families or supports they might need, what are your thoughts around that, like?
Essentially, if there's some investigating around, if we could offer it after school for those two hours.
Ah, okay.
Like here for families, like, that'd be something you'd investigate.
For all grade levels.
Or, I don't know, we never talked about it, but especially the little ones, right?
They can't.
Sure. Home. We don't, we can't, so we.
And we can't do late start?
I think that's, um, that's tough to have parents, teachers come in and focus and do PD when they're gonna wanna just come in and plan and be ready for kids. Do you know what I'm saying, like, that's the tricky part.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if that's easier for families, honestly, to bring them later.
I guess for me, I feel like I would like to understand the supports we put, but we're gonna put something so big on our community and say, this is our schedule. And like, I fully support the reasoning, I'd like to also be able to say, here's how we're gonna support you at the same time. Because it's, it's gonna be a big deal for some families, I think. I mean, so, you know, some people be able to absorb and adjust.
Right.
Without a lot of support, but.
Right.
It, it's a hard one for me to say, we're gonna get back to you on how we might offer some support while at the same time.
That's fair.
I don't know, that's, that's my heart, because I really support this initiative, right? But I don't wanna put a burden on families at the same, like, if there is something we can do, that's new.
Yeah. So I put on a K four schedule and supports for families.
Yeah, that's, those are my story.
Can I know, can we know the minutes too?
Sure.
So coming in.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, okay, so then we have recommended actions, is there any further discussion? We really should get a motion for.
There's a recommended, there's no motion then, cause she's bringing it back.
Right, yeah. I, sorry, I mean, I don't know.
That's fine.
I don't feel comfortable voting without knowing how, what the impact is to the community.
Yeah.
And, and then I just have to be comfortable with, you know, and support the initiative, so.
Okay, then we should move on to the next.
Yeah. So do you table? I don't know, what do you do?
Table it, it's all.
Okay, I'll agree with that. Did you have it as a action, then we just table it?
Okay.
Okay.
And I would actually just put, have both discussion or an action on any of the things, so we don't have to always.
Alright, um, then moving on to item three C, the, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed holiday calendar.
Well, this one's a little easier. This one is just the holidays, meeting with the partner districts. Um, one of the big recommendations that came out of all the partner schools that we wanted to align with was for twenty-three, twenty-four. Moving the first day of school from September first to September fifth, because September first is a Friday. Um, so their communities all kind of felt that parents probably would prefer to not come for one day and then come back. So that's really the only big thing, otherwise, we aligned with, um, Black Point B side and Nigle and the partner schools with holiday break, spring break, last day of school. So that's really all that you're.
That's exciting, approving.
One thing though is that, uh, I hate to say, Rosh Hashanah is not listed on here.
I think it's not.
Oh, wait, I just about to say, it is, it's on the weekend, we're, how wonderful.
You got a day back.
And, you know, it's funny, I looked at it and I forgot, so I literally just looked at it, that, that minute. Uh, to verify, okay, that's great, and with, the only thing that's, uh, else that has strikes me is, and it just feels like it's more compressed. And maybe I'm just wrong about that, but two fifteen, the eighth grade promotion, I know that usually we might have an extra day for other students. Or sometimes that's what's happened along with, uh, and there you have it, and last day of students and trimester.
You're right, it is compressed, and the reason it's compressed is because, one, the Jewish holidays on a weekend, so that's not a day. And then if you look at spring break in twenty-three, twenty-four, it falls with Easter. So typically, we have the week of spring break, but then we also have later on, Good Friday and Easter Monday. So between that, Rosh Hashanah, Rosh Hashanah, there are three additional days, so that's why we can get up to school a little earlier.
I don't actually see N on, am I missing the last?
I think it's the fifth.
Oh, it's just.
Oh, they're all June eighth grade.
So no, June sixth, there should be, there should be a sixth in there for last day of school.
June sixth.
So it should be June fifth.
So, um, middle school or eighth grade is the fifth.
Yeah.
And then everybody else.
Oh, six, yeah, right, yeah. Which is difficult. Staff day is gonna be seventh.
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
But we do, we get three days back because of where the holidays lie.
So.
That's, that's great when you can do it. Is there a motion? Any further discussion? Let's do motion purchase, if you truly correct, is there a motion? I'll move to approve the calendar. Is there a second?
We'll get you updated.
Uh, I'll, I'll second, connect with, with the updates.
Yeah, so basically, it's missing the last two days.
So there's early release that is with different times, and if those aren't.
Highlighted, yeah.
Okay. Right, right, so this is just holidays, so maybe that's what you put in your motion, Daniel.
Oh, yeah.
Is that you're just approving the holiday.
Thank you, yes. Uh, did I motion? I'll second, just approving the holiday.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing down on the voice floor, all favor, please, six, five, the thing, aye. Aye, motion carries, item number three, the open enrollment declaration of seats.
Alright, so obviously open for debate, I know that we've talked, that we talked about this a bit in the past. Um, K five, it looks like we would wanna declare about ten seats. First grade about eight. Um, second and third grade, we could comfortably declare two if you were interested, and we still have plenty of buffer.
Yeah, this is different, we have different numbers than what you.
Yeah, I'm just kind of like giving a buffer.
Oh.
Um, so those are like all the seats that we would have open, and, but I'm, my recommendation would be, we don't go to the max. Because if we have families move in, then we wanna have a little bit of a buffer, so that we don't end up with big class sizes.
Right.
So, um, so when looking at those numbers, it was ten, eight, two, two, and then the seventh grade, and I know to Mika, and we've talked about this. That if we did declare any seats at seventh grade, and I was looking at five, that we would make sure that we were very clear to families, that if they apply at that grade, they are not guaranteed to Nigle, so that they would know, like, when they apply, that that doesn't mean they would be guaranteed to, for Nigle.
They're saying five seats in seventh grade, but we have nine.
Right, just to keep it comfortable, so in case they would move in.
So first grade is one number again, are you recommending?
So in order to create a buffer in case families move into the district, we don't want teachers to have too many kids.
Uh-huh.
So looking at those numbers, it was, I was looking at ten for K five, eight for first grade, second and third grade two.
Combined?
No, each five, and then seventh grade five.
Oh, so I see, so I'm looking at, uh, K five, and it has a blank there in yellow, but first does ten, average eighteen points you could pass, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there was a recommendation.
Not what we have.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me share this.
Said ten and then.
What she's saying is she, you know, that, that is the maximum we could take, but she's recommending that she goes a little bit lower.
Yeah, but these numbers are higher than what she was told us, so that doesn't make.
Right, so the numbers that I put on there are higher, because then looking at what we wanna declare, we wanna make sure that we leave us some buffer in case families move into the district.
So for instance, if we declared, um, what is it on there, K five is, how many?
None.
So.
But you.
For K five, it's, it, you shouldn't, it shouldn't matter, because it's, it's ten, because we don't have any kid right here.
Right, so it's.
But like for first grade, how many, how many is it on a first grade?
It says ten.
Right, so she wants to leave those two just in case those two kids come into the district that actually live in the district. Instead of saying the total ten, and then having two more, then we have twelve kids that we want, instead of.
Do we have historical data, that up to like sort of back on our.
So the historical data, that of, um, I feel, hope the other at the bottom is just how many kids have applied each year. And she said probably about a dozen per grade level, so we definitely have people applying and wanting to come into the district. Um, and even, um, what to Mika was saying, I'm, I would even be giving a little bit more of a buffer. Because if we did the full ten for first grade, we'd still only have the average class size. Because if we did the full ten for first grade, we'd still only have the average class size of eighteen. So we have plenty of space if we go with eight to have, like, we get a five, six, seven residents move in. And we still wouldn't have, like, our class sizes would still be in the appropriate range. So I just wanna make sure that if, let's say they all fill in and we get ten families move in, we don't have huge class sizes.
So eight for K five, eight for first grade, two for second.
K five was ten.
Uh, sorry, K five is ten, I apologize. So K five is ten, first grade is eight, second and third are two each, and then seventh grade would be five.
Yeah.
And I don't think we should bring that. And my personal opinion is you should, I knew that you were bringing that seventh grade five. We're just using these kids for money at that point.
I think.
I, I know, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I just feel like. It's an opportunity for students. And if a family has, there could be families who have really good reasons to wanna move their kids from where they are. Um, and so I think that that should be the family's decision.
Yes, we build on the backs of the kids that are.
Well, if you're, if, if the families are duly noticed that this is not, if it isn't in the nickel A, does that?
As a, as a, as a private, I mean, as literally as a two-twenty kid. We, like, you knew you couldn't do something or two-twenty you could do it. But there are other open enrollments and possible kids that people would just, they, even though they, you tell them that, they take, oh, yeah, but they may change their mind. It's, it's like this thing where.
I mean, if we're very.
But we're gonna get.
You know, I, I just wanna ask one other question here, which is that if we don't fill the seats and we have a vacancy, aside from that, we get per pupil aid. Uh, we, we get aid from open enrollment, which ends up meaning that we can, you know, make profit off of that, or at least can add to our bottom line. But if we don't do that, then we basically have classes that are gonna be empty, right? I mean, as it is for first grade, ten takes the eighteen point two, so, you know, that's something like sixteen. And I guess my question is, if we did nothing and didn't have any open enrollment, would be, we still have, you know, uh, work for, you know, all the teachings.
And I wanna, I wanna let, and I forgot, because I was gonna ask Lindsay to bring just enrollment numbers.
Yeah.
So we're declining enrollment, so we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to like stay cool. I mean, really, and because, and I don't know if you wanna share the last five years with.
Yeah, so in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we had total enrollment of one thousand fifty-one. In two thousand nineteen, twenty, we have one thousand thirty-two. In twenty twenty-one was nine hundred and fifty-six. And this year, as of our third Friday count in the fall, we had nine hundred and forty-nine. Two really are gonna look at those two years. It's COVID. People took their kids out.
Correct, but we were declining prior to COVID.
Even prior, we went up and down, but the year before that, we were.
But it's still COVID and we still ask people to wear masks and we still aren't.
I need to pull the protocols now because, um, I'm, go ahead.
So I guess I would just to Tika's point, the be clear does not guarantee nickel A. I mean, I don't even think that's, that's not accurate. Like, we know nickel A not acceptable, but like, didn't they decline all open enrollment as in the past, right?
Now, as a matter of fact.
So we know that there is, you know, well, they don't do, is that right? They don't.
They said there was no availability and, uh.
So I'm just saying, like, if, if you wanna give people accurate information, it's, but most likely that, that historically they don't have open enrollment, right? So this is not a pathway to that. Like, there needs to be just something that's very clear, not even preference or this won't guarantee it's like, this is, we'll give your child the best two years, uh, you know, our district has to offer. And then. My one question, open enrollment, if kids. If kids come in, middle, if kids come in at K five or early on in open enrollment, I think guarantees continue throughout districts.
Through eighth grade, yeah.
Right, right. Hard to.
I mean, and even if they, like, if they move in the middle of the year, they can do.
I just think it's people's, it's family choice.
Danielle, I understand because you definitely give everybody else your opinion. And if no one agrees, then.
So I'm, I'm completely okay with it. No, I'm just good, I'm just. I think I agree with you.
I, I, I'm okay with it, Danielle, whatever it is.
Well, I'm not doing, yeah. And I just feel like families decide.
Yeah, you know, you're not entitled.
I'm kind of to your opinion.
No, we're not entitled to our things.
Of course you are.
Okay, so is there a motion on the recommendation of adding ten kids, uh, spots for open enrollment for K five? Eight to the first graders, uh, two second, two to third, and five seventh grade. Or, okay, is there a second? Second, okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, I'm gonna do this on a roll call vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye to me.
Oh.
Ben, when, aye. And Daniel Bailey.
Aye.
And Andrew Franklin, both aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, uh, then I guess, uh, this is, uh, to Danielle, uh, Ms. Bailey, uh, you uh, are presenting item two E, I believe, which is the Black History Month, uh, resolution.
Uh, yes, so, uh, this is the second year the board has recognized Black History Month in a resolution. And I'm happy to say that we're in a district where we don't actually need a formal resolution. You know, as our staff, our teachers and our administrators, um, know the importance of, of teaching about the history and the culture and, uh, the lives of black people, American, black Americans, um, throughout the year. That said, it's February and, or February is coming and, um, it's important to take advantage of this time and to say it publicly. Um, you know, that we, we do affirm and we do sort of honor the contributions and the stories, um, this month and again, every month throughout the year. Um, our February curriculum meeting will be where we will highlight some of the events and activities and things going on throughout the month. If people want to, um, know more, but I imagine there will also be communications prior to the month beginning to, um, communicate some of that as well. And I just, um, thought that what we would do is have the board read the resolution into the record.
Do you wanna, uh, read the resolutions to the record? I, I know that there's some, and I apologize for being on the spot, but I, I'm happy to, if you, uh, wanted us to read out loud, if you want to just, uh, read the resolution.
No, I think everyone should read it, or, right?
Okay.
Just do a razz and we'll just move.
All right, that's fine then, uh. I'll start and then we'll just go down and we'll just read a recital. Okay, uh, resolution recognition of Black History Month twenty-two. Whereas Black History Month encourages society and schools to celebrate the history, contributions, achievements of black Americans and.
Whereas this observance permits society to reexamine its role in preserving the civil rights of all citizens and.
Uh, whereas schools should be places for the practice of equity, for the building of understanding and for active engagement in all of all and creating pathways to freedom and justice for all people and.
My thought got inspired. Very good. I have my achievement.
Whereas achievements of black Americans have defended, benefited all mankind and.
Whereas Black History is American history and.
Whereas one month is not sufficient to honor all the history, contributions and achievements of black people in the United States. And it is important to recognize throughout the school year the contributions of black people in society and to recognize and address disparities and student outcomes in order to move towards greater equity in our education system and the greater community.
Whereas this year, the Glendale River Hills School District will work to provide resources to expand teacher knowledge around Black History for the purpose of engaging students and thinking critically about those historical events and how they impact the current racial climate in America. Further this work, partnering with local organizations and expanding our resource base will provide rich, contextualized and authentic learning opportunities for our students. We are committed to intentionally providing our students with rich and robust Afrocentric lessons and activities integrated into the core content areas when recognizing, celebrating and honoring African-American achievements and contributions to the fabric of our society.
Now therefore be, if we found the Glendale River Hills School District Board of Education probably recognizing the month of February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month.
In witness whereof, the undersigned being all the members of the Board of Education Glendale River School District have executed this resolution this nineteenth day of January, twenty twenty-two. Is there a formal motion to adopt this, uh, month, uh, this year's Black History Month resolution?
Someone.
Is there a second? Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you for the hard work, Ms. Bailey.
I wasn't the only one who answered that. I was talking with Dr. Sandoval.
All right, consent agenda, approval of financial and approval of minutes, items four A and four B. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Someone. Is there a second?
Second.
On the voice vote, please signify by saying aye. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, item five A, talent development update.
All right, we are gonna need just a moment for some.
Why do I have to put in my email address to join the group meeting?
I don't think I have screen share. Uh, well, I need you to, oh, here you are, sorry.
All right, I'm just a little update on the gifted and talented work. We're currently working with a consultant, um, from CISA one. Jacqueline Jolly, and I've been working with, um, Ms. Morally, um, around some of this work as well. So, um, we created a workflow so you can kinda see where we're sitting with some of this work. Can you do maybe?
That's right.
So we're doing some work around just basing all of our work really off of that audit and some feedback from staff and then also Ms. Morally. Um, so as you can see here, oh, there we go. It kinda started with just kind of getting a current state and reviewing what the audit had to say. Um, and then also Ms. J- Ms. Jolly came in and did, um, some observations. She's coming back to do some additional observations as well of our. All of them. Nope, nope. Okay, sorry. No, perfect, thank you. Um, so she'll be coming back to do some additional observations. Um, but what we currently started doing is really digging into the handbook. Um, our goal is to create a new staff handbook and then also a caregiver handbook for gifted and talented. And a lot of the pieces within the handbook are gonna cover some of those non-compliant areas that we had within the gifted and talented audits. So currently, um, we met on January twelfth, we started table of contents for both the staff and the caregiver, um, handbook. And we also started creating, um, vision statements. So we did some drafts, so some vision statements that we're gonna have embedded with our curriculum team. And then we're also sending that out to our staff um, to give feedback around those drafted vision statements. Um, we're also really, um, digging in more, um, a little further down, um, reviewing that feedback. Again, we're gonna be looking at the handbook work, continuing that work, um, checking in to make sure that we're addressing um, all the concerns from the audit and then creating more workflow times later, um, further down on this. And then on January twenty-fourth, that's when I'm gonna be sharing it with staff, the vision statements. On February second, again, we have, these are all the scheduled dates that we have to work. On February second, we're gonna be doing handbook work again, um, doing final drafts of the vision statement to share with the curriculum committee for feedback. We're gonna, um, again, check that audits to make sure that we're, you know, making sure we're covering all those steps. And then right at this point, that's when we're gonna create our next section of work that we need to create. Our end product goals are down here for June. So what we're looking at is to make sure our shared products are going to be on that handbook drafts so that we can have them embedded by the curriculum team, um, for both staff and for caregivers. So you'll have, you know, be able to give feedback at that time. June twenty twenty-two, share the product with the whole school board. And then June twenty twenty-two as well, really determining dates to share those products with staff as well. And then also coming up with a PD plan, that was a big piece to that audit as well. It's making sure that we're providing professional development for staff around this. And then in June, July, we're looking at updating everything on the work set. That's kind of our task plan right now.
And is this considering both the gifted and talented portion and the STEM? And we've kind of split these into two different ideas. I mean, I know that we're talking about Ms. Morally, that was talent development, but, you know, whether or not talent development replaces pretty gifted and talented or, you know, we still talk about two different aspects of what you're doing. Are we addressing both things, the work that we've done right now?
Um, there's different pieces to it. So overall, some of the things that Ms. Morally is doing, some of the competition work and different things like that, all that is gonna continue, right? But there were also some areas in the audit that were not happening, that were non-compliant. So really, some of the focusing of this handbook is on those pieces.
Well, I would expect that since we did, you know, gifted and talented audit and since we have to address gifted and talented, that a lot of that work is gonna be primarily focused on the gifted and talented as well to kind of the, the STEM stuff.
Correct.
Not gifted and talented.
Correct.
But what I'm saying is I don't wanna lose that STEM portion of the discussion. So I wanna make sure that is kind of incorporated into this so that we have kind of a bigger picture of everything. When it comes back to the board for approval.
And a big piece of that is gonna be within some of this staff development here and a lot of the training for staff. And then also it's gonna have to do with some of the scheduling work that we're already doing, sending out the surveys to families. Um, figuring out where we kinda sit with, um, you know, what's high priority and then also scheduling. So they're creating a scheduling committee as well at the middle school to kinda look at, see where we can make some adjustments in the future um, based off of feedback from this year.
Sure. And then the only other thing I just want to point out, make, go back to my, but when we eliminated resource and we revamped, uh, gifted and talented, that happened with maybe initially not all of us knowing that was happening and it, by the time that we did, um, it was too late to really change anything. And I, I mean, that's watering the bridge, but all I wanna say is I wanna make sure that as a board, whatever the final product is, it comes to us for approval for these elements before it gets adopted for next year. Because, you know, then we miss those late, you know, poll questions about why all of a sudden resources been eliminated. And having tiles, we're better off getting in front of the board and letting the board hear everything, act on it. And I think that's important.
Right, and that's why the June twenty twenty-two, um, it'll be presented at the board meeting. And then it'll also be at the curriculum committee's keyboard.
And then the other part, I gotta say, I'm huge, uh, you know, a cheerleader for Ms. Morally, she does an awful lot of stuff. And I know that we have, you know, the district priorities and we have to rethink, we deliver gifted and talented. But the STEM education that we do here, I mean, I've talked to other people in the community, they've never, some people have never heard of Future City. And, I mean, it's huge. I mean, normally it's on the MSOE campus, um, you know, you, you get dozens of schools coming in from all over. Not just Wisconsin, there's a couple of Minnesota schools in there. They're all spread out. That's one thing that she's done. Um, and that's just the Future City aspect of it. And that just, and then, you know, she's had several different teams. She does an awful lot of STEM work at school. And we need to make sure that we incorporate back into the schedule some regular STEM activities. It's just the best way to do a lot of these things is to have it be part of, you know, the school day. And I, I just, I, I, we lost a little bit of that. And look, you know, we, we have been hit with a lot of different. And look, you know, we have been hit with a lot of different priorities, a lot of different emergencies, a lot of different things that we've had to do. And, you know, you can't all just do the same thing and, and leave it at that. But I, I, I've looked how my daughter's been participating, and, I mean, I know there's some kids who really diehard and committed, but I feel that we just want to engage a lot of students, and I think there's a lot of things that she can do, that she can gain more students that, you know, were lost because they didn't have the time outside of school, you know, to do it. So that's my sense of it, but I think that, you know, what you're doing with the audit, what you're doing with the work needs to be done, you know, it's, it's a tough process. I know that you're spending a lot of work on it, and I recognize that. I appreciate that there's a lot going on behind the scenes. So I just want you to know that I also support the administration, you know, for the work that they're doing on this. Because I think we see a lot of it, and I think pandemic with virtual education also closed drive to some of these things. But now that we're back somewhat more in an open world, I mean, maybe the playing field, you know, is more apparent now.
And Ms. Morally is, I mean, we meet every time together, honestly, we're like all the time. So, I mean, we're doing this together, so just so you know.
Okay. That's me. All right, fine.
I'm a cheerleader too.
Okay, by the way, if you're looking out, see if there are any hands raised, and if I missed one before, I'm sorry. But, you know, if I missed someone, raised their hand, wants to say something, just wave it at me and make some noise. Okay, five B, DAP survey, results and planning.
Okay, so we talked earlier in the year about, every year, we do the youth risk assessment survey. This year, we added the developmental asset profile survey, the DAP assessment. This was a partnership with our partner districts. So apparently, this was a conversation that they had last year around all the schools in our area doing the same survey and then doing it every year. And this is around youth mental health. So I came into the conversation, and Ms. Young jumped right in, and we did do the survey this year. So I just want to give a little bit of background. So they sent us this giant report, and what I did is I took some of the main pieces out of it to share with you guys tonight. But there's an introduction that I just kind of wanted to share about what this survey is. So, um, so in the introduction, they said, "This report offers unique and complimentary information on your youth, emphasizing the strengths and supports they have in their everyday lives." It describes the strengths and supports that people, young people have in their lives, known as developmental assets. They guide, that's what guides choices young people make, including their success in school, health, and how they contribute to the community. Highlights, it also highlights the perspectives of young people themselves, recognizing that young people's perceptions of themselves and the world around them are pivotal for where they turn for help and for choices that they make. It puts our work in context so that we can look at our young people's strengths, as well as the supports they have or don't have with family, schools, and communities. And this broader picture sets the same for collaboration, shared responsibility, and collective impact efforts. So this report builds on two decades of research with more than 5 million youth in grades four through 12 in the United States and around the world. Research done by Minneapolis-based Search Institute has identified key developmental assets that are critical for positive outcomes for young people from different backgrounds and different situations. Thousands of studies have confirmed that young people with higher levels of assets are mentally and physically healthier, safer, more caring, more productive, more involved in contributing to society than are youth with lower levels of assets. They do better in school, they're more prepared for college and career after high school. So I want to go through, it does 58 items that they ask young people, so I just kind of want to go through what we found when we did this survey. So first, I'll just start with our demographics. So we have 304 students complete the survey in grades four through eight. So you can just see how many students that was and like what percentage of the total sample that was. So it's pretty consistent, eighth grade had a little bit higher percentage.
How are the students like operators, what about this survey?
So they took it during their SEO classes with Ms. Tatum. So we had an entire week, so that each time they went to that class for that week, it was to do the survey.
And some kids just opted not to do it?
Or, or they were absent.
Okay.
Yeah, we did have a small handful of parents do, we gave them the offer to opt out, but it wasn't the lot. Most parents were happy with them doing it. Um, male, female, so we just ended up with 51% female, 41% male that took the survey.
Do you have a quick question?
Super quick question. Do you know what total percentage of students actually took the survey? I actually don't know what our enrollment is.
I could look, can I look at?
It's only if it's.
I guess it's probably in here somewhere, but I heard.
I don't want to make this meeting any longer. If it's hard to find.
I can get you that information. 496 kids that went home. We've got to calculate. So 304 out of 496, yeah. So, yeah, there could be kids who just said to check out, they're gonna do it. Um, so just looking at our race, breakdown by race and ethnicity. So 32% African-American, all the way down to 13% multiracial, so I won't read this to you, but you guys will look at the numbers. Um, so here's our key. So as we're going through all the results in this survey, they've coded different ranges in your responses. So red is challenged, orange is vulnerable, purple adequate, and green thriving. So our overall score, so this was all kids, overall scores, this is how they broke down. So you can see that 48, 47% of our youth scored inadequate and thriving combined. This is for like all areas, so this is kind of like super high level. Um, and on the other end, 17% of our youth scored in challenged. We're gonna break that way down. So here's the different categories, and you can see if they scored, like what percentage scored in each of those areas. So this shows average scores, which gives you a sense of your overall, and then the distribution. So this is the distribution of scores. It uses the challenged, vulnerable, adequate, thriving. So this is kind of like a big picture, we're gonna get much better information in a minute, but I just wanted to give you the big picture of our data. And you can see some strengths, so I'm gonna highlight those two, because there's some definite strikes in this data. So here's my grade level. So the percentage of students who scored overall for the whole 58 questions in each of those categories broken down by fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then what I did, you'll notice, is I totaled it. So the challenged and vulnerable together, I created a column there, so you could see that total, and then adequate thriving together, so you could see that total. So there's some interesting data there, especially when you look at the difference between like fourth grade and eighth grade, when it comes to adequate thriving, with 71% of our fourth graders and only 25% of our eighth graders. Gender, so that's just broken down, really not that different. If you look at each category, male, female, the numbers are pretty close. We're gonna give another option. So basically, they answered questions that then put them into these categories based on their answers, so I'll get into that more.
I just made gender, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, they were, yep. Yep, we did the survey, we're good to get that out. Okay, so the first piece is the eight categories of developmental assets. So the framework is organized into eight categories, which are shown in these boxes. They represent key supports, external assets, and strengths, internal assets, that young people need to have and develop in order to thrive. The external assets are relationships and opportunities that are provided by families, schools, and communities. The internal, our internal values, commitment, skills, and self-perception that young people develop within themselves that lead to self-regulation, internal motivation, and personal character. So then, I'm gonna give you the information that we got for those. So here are the different eight categories, again, that were on the previous page, and you can see how well our students did on average in each category. It shows that a particular area of relative strength is support and boundaries and expectation, which builds on policies, practices, programs, and partnerships. So areas for growth, are we super surprised with middle schoolers' constructive use of time? One that we really want to dig into, and I also want to share that our partner districts, even though our, our communities are different, very similar result. So that positive identity and constructive use of time was where they showed the most need as well in the partner district. If you take those responses, those eight categories, and you break it out by challenged, vulnerable, adequate, thriving, you can just get the percentages in each of those boxes. They said typically, when they, based on doing the survey, you expect to see between 5 and 15% scoring in challenge, that's typical, and between 5 and 15% scoring in thriving. So it's interesting to just look at like what typical data they get and how we compare it to that. So our support, it's interesting, because they said typically 5 to 15% thriving, and ours was 30%. So that's a real positive, that's a real strength. Then the next piece is the five contexts for building assets. So it says, "Young people need to experience strengths and supports across all parts of their life, not just in one place, such as school or home." So this explores their perception of supports and strengths across five contexts. So here's our breakdown for that.
So can I just ask a question? So, I mean, the idea is, we're trying to get people to level thriving, figure out strategies to do that. These five contexts here are really kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? But there's a price point or whatever, there are tools, there are keys that we can press on.
And we're gonna get it.
To focus on, yeah.
They give us tools too, to do the work, which is exciting.
Lovers, yeah.
So highest levels of support were family. So that was a real strength, and that was across the board in all the districts. On the lowest levels of support from student perception, most community. And then again, broken down with that same range where you expect to see about between 5 and 15% challenged and about 5 and 15% in thriving. So I met with all the student services directors from all the area districts, and like I said, our data was very, very, very similar. We have a lot more that I didn't include, like they actually gave us for every single question, the percentage of kids that scored in different areas. So I did want to share. Yeah, I feel super, super positive. And now I can't look, my lips are in a mess. Like some flip through papers. Okay, so I just wanted to share a few questions, there are 58, so I don't want to share them all, but they were just real positives. So one of the questions was, "I have parents who try to help me succeed. 92% of our students were very often or almost always." So like their answers weren't thriving, challenging, you know what I mean? They just did not at all, sometimes very often or extremely or almost always. So it was 92%. Um, "I have a school that cares about kids and encourages them, 75% were very often or almost always. I have teachers who urge me to develop and achieve, was 80%. I have support, support from adults other than my parents, 78%. I have a family that provides me with clear rules, was 80%. And I have parents who urge me to do well in school, was 89%." So that was like really positive data, and so that lines right again with the support piece being families being really, really strong for our students. So that was, that was really positive to see. The other thing they provided with us with is for each of these areas, like it sounds like, almost like a worksheet. So we're gonna have, like it says, you know, set strategies, what's your long-term goal, how do you, what's the power, how can you be involved? So enabled to map out a plan. So if you look at the next steps, so the student services team all met, and we all looked at our data, we saw like some really clear areas for growth. They're very similar across all districts. All SST teams from all districts will have time on that February PD day to dig into this data, to dig into some of the research, resources that they provided, to look at some of the planning templates, and to create an action plan that would run from February to June. And it's really focused on what supports and strategies can teachers implement in their classroom to strengthen these priority areas. And they are really specific, like one of the ones about positive self-image, some of the strategies that they gave were teachers providing specific positive feedback. So giving students not just, hey, you did a great job, but really specific feedback, and that can help students with their self-image. So they gave some really nice strategies that can be implemented in the classroom. But that work is gonna be for counselors, our sites, our social workers to dig in together, come up with this plan, and then work with staff for the remainder of the year. We know it's a short amount of time, but then we'll check in in May or June, see what's working, see what's not working, do a quick dipstick with students, and then the goal would be to do the survey again in the fall and continue the plan.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's a communication you can share with the families too? We'd love to reinforce that with our children.
Yes. I wanted to share it here first, but then, yes.
Yeah, please, absolutely.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And there's so many positives too from the family side, that it's just, yeah, definitely want to share.
Cool, you're very excited about this.
I am, it's like, because we keep saying, like, we know our kids are dealing with trauma, with mental health. And when I see self-identity that low, like, I want to go, what are we gonna do next? You know, because we, we have the power to strengthen, help strengthen that, yeah.
I have a couple comments.
Yeah?
This is obviously, you know, where my heart is. And as Sita and I, she can't be here today, but we shared notes, so I'm sharing some thoughts from her as well, as Sita Hager. "I have significant concerns about the low response rate. If only 60% of our students responded to this when it was present in the classroom and available, that's a very low response rate to me. And I can make an educated guess, as, as the mental state of the people who didn't respond. I have significant concerns that this underreports the vulnerable and challenged categories. And I, I would sure like to know how 40% of students got away with not responding to this. So I have questions about, I would say, the veracity of the data, about a stronger response rate. And I think the district needs to do hard work to get those responses, because until then, you can't build strong strategies on this data. Almost half your students haven't responded, so I have significant concerns about that."
So can we respond to that first piece? So I think that's a whole other part of the data that we have the action plan around, because why are there kids that sat and didn't respond? But the beauty of this survey also is that if we implement strategies based on the data we have, it's gonna support all students, even the ones that didn't take the survey. So that would be my, you know what I mean, my, my push to continue the work, and then, yes, we need to have part of our action plan around why are kids not taking it? Absolutely.
My concern is that, you know, it's, it is obviously great to focus on strengths, but that doesn't lead to change in growth. So when I look at results of 60% of students, 40% opted out or evaded, and over half of those are challenged or vulnerable on personal, social community. These are like pre-significant kind of core issues aligned with mental health. And we're talking about teaching teachers how to use positive words for students. I'm sitting here shaking my head and saying, "How are the incredibly limited resources we have right now gonna answer this need?" We've got one social worker and two school counselors.
So that's so much of this.
And I, I'm worried that this is gonna become a conversation about a superficial conversation.
So I have.
And I, unfinished, I, I, I just don't see that our school district has the resources to use this need, and I, I'm heartachey about these numbers. And I'm heartachey that what we're talking about is trying to make it a curriculum issue, this is not a pedemotional issue.
But it's a classroom culture issue. There's three social, a social worker and two counselors cannot fix this. They don't have the capacity, 10 counselors.
Exactly, they can't.
10 counselors could not fix this. It's a system issue, a system issue, and we all have to work together to change the system. And so we're gonna lean on our student services team to look at this data and, and create the plan, but then we all have to implement it.
I think you're kind of missing the point of what I'm trying to add to it for here, which is that I think, I mean, you know I'm ready for the school board, this is not why I'm saying this. All of you have known me for the last three years, know this is just where I come from. I don't care if I lose a win, I'll still be saying this. I just, I'm so worried about the limits on our mental health resources here. And I'm worried that we're gonna rely on incomplete data to make decisions. So I, I just, I'm really worried. And I hope you continue to think about this, and think about growing our mental health resources, not pushing it down to the teachers who don't have the training and background to recognize those needs at the same level as mental health professionals. And asking them to do that hard work that, you know, they say, "Where's the PD time to teach this skill?" Right, so I'm just, I'm just really worried about how this is gonna play out. And I don't know what the answer is, but as a community member, I just want to tell you, I'm still. And I don't know what the answer is, but as a community member, I just want to tell you, I'm still really, really worried. There's some good data and there's some that should be given a real pause as to how, how it is being done.
It's a first, first, first step.
Thank you very much for our work and look forward to next step. And let's move on to the next item, which is five C. Buildings and ground transition.
I'm going to switch spots with someone.
I say it's a heavy, with a heavy heart.
Okay. Well, I would first let Mr. Johnson talk a little bit about what they did up to now. And I have to jump in kind of like you did at the B and G meeting.
So how should, yeah, so go ahead. I mean, how should we start that discussion?
What would I do?
So originally when Elsa and I both came into the district in July, we were under the impression that Mr. Beckman was going to meeting us at the end of January. And so there wasn't an initial plan in place. And so we talked with the buildings and ground team. We also talked with Mr. Beckman and he gave us a couple of different scenarios of these are some different ideas that he had for transition. And based off of the feedback from the team, we did offer it to an internal candidate. And that didn't end up turning out. And then we offered it to a second internal candidate. And it, it, both of them are excellent employees of the district and.
And one might, and one of them might be not yet.
It's just timing and I think there's definitely a future there for him. And so that happened over the course of October through December. And so then we ended up, I talked to a couple other districts that the facilities ended up falling under the business services. And so we thought that this would be a coming to plan for right now for us to get to the transition and just to see how things go. And for myself coming into this district, I would not, I told Jim this, I would not have even undertaken this without the amazing team that he has. Because of the day-to-days that they're able to handle, I, I know that it will continue to run seamlessly. In my former district, I did have experience with safety, so I, I'm familiar with that. And I know I go be able to barter with Jim and meet with him if I have questions that come up. But he's done a great job in the last month. We've been meeting regularly just to he put together what his goals and responsibilities are and just figuring out how does that fit into what we have and what we're supposed to be aiming for.
Yeah, what we've been doing over the last three, four months at least, if not since last fall. I created a couple documents for Lindsay and Allison and the rest of the staff, of my staff, some day-to-day activities, but also like monthly activities and what happens in the summer or what happens. You know, what are the one-time-a-year things that you have in core? Lindsay, as she said, she has experience in safety. That's a big part of it. There's been parts of my job and how, I think I explained this partially on the B and G meeting, go back about twenty years when we only had three administrators here. And a lot of these kind of fell on my desk because there was no one else. Or we had kind of a revolving door for about five or six years in the business office. And we, we had like a part-time business manager and then there was lots of things going on, I think, Andy, even before you were on the board. So it was just kind of like, well, who's the last man standing? So I've probably taken on things that normal B and G people wouldn't do, but we just didn't. And it's kind of continued that way. So Lindsay and I and Allison have sat down along with my team. There's lots of things, like I've given everything I do to Karen. She has a big pile of stuff on her desk right now. So we've gone through, we've gone through a lot of things. And I think the emphasis that you're gonna hear from, from Allison and Lindsay is that this is a transition for the next five months and let's see what's going on. And I, it may not even be five months. I think you're gonna look probably in late April or May, really evaluate again, which is a good time too, because as you know, the end of the school year, a lot of people, jobs are opening up and closing. And just talking with my colleagues and other people around the state too, there's a health shortage in every field and there's a health shortage in this field too. And so is it the most ideal thing? No, but I'm gonna say it's, I think it's gonna work for the district and, and, and I've done this far. A lot, but I'm not going anywhere either. I'm five minutes away. So, you know.
You're on the back.
When Mike calls.
I've got your cell phone number.
When Mike sees my number, Andy texts me, whatever. When Mike calls, you know, many of you remember Don Bruning, I would say that Mike probably calls Don Bruning twice a month. Because something comes up and it's just, you know, we, we work with that. So I think that's where we're at and, and you know, we're gonna go forward, right?
And then we'll have, you know, later we'll have staffing discussions where we'll talk about all the staffing, organization, all of that. And we can continue this conversation.
And I know I don't talk about this a lot, but thank you, Lindsay and Allison. I have been blessed with an unbelievable staff over the last twenty years. My only turnover has been retirees. So I'm, I'm very proud of that. I'm also proud of our productivity, of what we can do in our district with, with seven full-time people, with three buildings and almost four hundred thousand square feet of, of buildings and thirty-eight acres of land. And we do it with seven people. And so I'm very proud of my staff and they are amazing. I can't say enough about them. And they don't always get the recognition that I think they should, but they know it from me, so.
Well, you have been, I mean, I gotta say, you have been in public face, but no, but listen, I mean, you know, if you track this in the new watch over the course of a year, right? The hiring of the summer staff, the work that gets done outside of our presence. Even before we had to deal with the pandemic, I still remember, you know, the disinfectant bottles, the, the ice thing. But you, you've been responsible for so many different, you know, parts of the physical structure. I mean, correct them or wrong, but I seem to recall that the carpet squares.
Oh, yeah.
The carpet here, I mean, these were all not just you implementing, but you were also making decisions and, you know, coming up with, you know, the right thing to work. You know, the lead certification from the facilities from way back. The, the cool, the heating tower for the pool. I mean, and a lot of these things, what, what I appreciate is that you brought technology and you brought environmentalism early on in a way that was affordable. And so you've been able to focus on really maintaining things and planning things out for the long periods of, you know, frankly, we didn't end up in a rut like some of the other districts, having to, you know, ask for more money to do things that probably should have been planned out much better over, you know, long term. So I appreciate everything you've done, that you've done. And a lot of it's not necessarily visible to naked eye. I've seen it and, you know, I just appreciate the effort that you put into it. And, you know, we'll see how things work without you. But, you know, one of the reasons why we're in a good place to be able to transition is because of all the work that you put into it up to this moment. So that I just want to say thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's been, it's been a really nice time. So I appreciate that.
I just wanted to give you that we have our school.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, wow.
spoken of our appreciation, our student. So thank you.
These are outstanding. And they spelled my name right. Well, wait, they didn't spell my name. That's all right. No one gets my email. Well, your email didn't work fine. But that's all right. This is outstanding. Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you. Thank you, Allison. And thank you, Gordon.
Awesome.
Like I said, it's been, it's been a great run and I enjoyed being here. I'm not going anywhere as far, you know, I might show up in the back of the room. Twenty-two, twenty-six West Arbor, so you'll hear that. And, but thank you.
Jim, I just want to say something that you were, like I said this in the B and G meeting, I want to say in this meeting, I am like teared that you are leaving. I have gone with you through my journey as a, a school board member. You were the first person I, I met in department heads. Well, the fact that I got put on this and everybody's like, why would you want to be on, what did I used to call it?
Maintenance committee.
And you were like, and I remember you saying, this is buildings and ground. We take care, which is we don't just do maintenance. We, I, I think something about the health of this building is because of us. But I just really learned to care about what you actually did. And it is more important than just cleaning a floor or, or repairing some things. You are making it safe for our kids. You're making it safe for a great work environment. And especially as I see all these referendums coming up with other districts that they did not take care of their buildings. They did not push for environment or anything like that. I just want to truly thank you. I, I, I do cheer up from time to time. Our dream did not come true that we could use those blueprints in here. Jim and I always had a longstanding joke. Every time we got mad at somebody, we're like, where's our blueprints for the Glendale High School, you know? So we're gonna put a whole district and we're gonna put our own high school in. And we're like, shh, you know, we, we kept saying shh. But that was just one of our, our, our little jokes in between our drinks. Do you got the bottle in there? You know, so we were gonna drink and look at this. So I, if there's one thing I hate change, I am a, I, I have a hard time with change and I have a hard time losing people with institutional allowance. I value it more than anything actually, because I do call you and you've given me advice. And sometimes we don't agree, but I take it, I do take it seriously and try to figure out what is going on. So this is my one long speech for the night, but I thank you very much for the service that you provided me personally, as well as the district, and I thank you.
Thanks to me. And something to remember that I heard a while, a long time ago and it stuck with me. If you find a job you like, you'll never work another day in your life. And that's how I feel about this district. It's great.
Well, we did want you to leave, so we had to make sure.
This is my six-hundredth board meeting.
Or close to. Wait, 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 six-hundredth though on staff or then who does the board member?
My board member time too.
Real quickly, do you have, can you give me your last presentation, just as a keepsake? It's probably like twenty-two minutes.
Which one was that?
I don't know, whichever it was. It's always long.
I can find that. I'll find that.
Okay, find that one.
I had a hundred slides, you know, it's a little more or a little dry.
Okay. Ivy, COVID updates.
All right, I'll go fast. So you guys all have access to the dashboard, so you can see what our numbers have been since we've come back from break. You can see that the numbers are going down, which is a very positive. And they're also going down for staff, which is, I know what we were really concerned about coming out of the holiday break was staffing. And so we've been, it's been really positive. So we're hoping that we hit our ice pick and that we're on our way back down from the surge. I also did a survey for vaccination because that was one of the things we talked about. As of today, we had a hundred and three staff member complete the survey, which is seventy-four percent of our staff. So I can shoot out another reminder of the seventy-four percent, ninety-seven percent had two doses and eighty percent of those are also boosted. And then I just also linked the new CDC guidelines, which went out obviously to you guys and to all parents. So Ms. Hess has been doing an amazing job communicating personally with families around that new five-day quarantine. She got all students' timelines adjusted as we, you know, implemented the new guideline. And students are, you know, missing a lot less time out of class because of the new guidelines as well staffed. So that's actually going very, very well. And then extracurriculars, I shared a document, that was the work that I did over the two weeks, meeting with each AD, meeting with Nicola Lay, talked to the people that were running clubs, everybody pulled in their mitigation strategies. I would say just a little bit of real in-time feedback. So today I stopped by the wrestling meet. Glen Hill staff and students, amazing. Everybody was masked up. We had this chair spread out. Everybody's doing a good job. I actually took a box of masks and walked around and gave them to some of the other people. And so Domski and I touched base around what, as part of his communication, when he's reaching out, he has a normal communication. When a meet's coming up with the other school, he's gonna add to that. Please know here are our mitigation strategies. So that the team coming in, because in all fairness, some of the people were like, oh, I didn't know you had to wear a mask here. So, and they took the mask and they were fine. But just making sure that the visiting team also follows the same guidelines that we are. Otherwise, it went really well. We had like pods of two, because we went down to two adults for each athlete to come watch. So we just had chairs and two socially distanced spectators were all wearing masks. So it seemed to go really well at the wrestling. So those are the COVID updates.
So like who is responsible for ensuring that the other team comes and they are like wearing masks or they're not? If you hadn't been there, perhaps those folks would have remained unmasked.
Yeah, so I've been kind of just connected with like Birmingham because you like as an athletic director around some of that. So, yeah, we need to have like just constant communication with the coaches around giving me some feedback on that. One of the things we also talked about, this is Nicola and our coaches, is that if we have any outbreaks on the team, that they would get that information to me because then we would probably implement testing for soon on the team. If we were to see any spread within the team. So just making sure they're communicating with me. But, yeah, there's a basketball game tomorrow, like, but then I'll be in conversation with Washington around these same pieces.
Okay. No one else? Ivy, Nicola, partner schools updates.
I'm sorry, I have two things. And then I think Jennifer has one because she has sources of partner schools as well. So like I said, we meet every month and then out of those superintendent meetings, we discuss what are things that we ought to share with our school boards so that we can make sure we're consistent with communication. One of the things that we've learned over the last half a year of working together is that we wanted to tighten up when we're sharing district communication so that we all know. So for example, that TikTok thing that happened earlier this year, I had no idea about it until like randomly talking to one of the superintendents who said, oh, yeah, I already sent out a letter to my families. So we talked about the idea, or like we've had threats in our schools and it may have happened in more than one of our schools, but we didn't know about it with each other. So what we're implementing is if something rises to the level that I feel I need to send out a district-wide email to all families about a situation, then I put it into a document and it'll alert the other superintendent so that they know. So that way I could look at that and go, oh, I should probably get something out about this too. Or just having knowledge that that's what's going on in their district. And if I have to get something out, we're gonna link our actual communication so we can kind of steal some of the language and not have to recreate the wheel. So for example, that TikTok thing. We were really happy with doing some of that communication when CDC was changing the guidance. And we really appreciated that, like the entire North Shore was communicating. We're all talking to each other about it. We had a shared letter, just created some real consistency for families. So we want to do that as an area to group and make sure we're sharing our district-wide communications. And then the other piece was substitute teacher training. So Fox Point Bayside is hosting a CSO one training for people who want to become substitute teachers. They have some space in that training, so we've shared that information with some of our building principals. If anybody knows anybody that wants to be a sub, definitely contact us because then they have space in that training and then people can go in a substitute teacher license.
Contact you?
Yes. And then I would share that with Jeff.
Is there a fee involved with that?
I don't think so. So he paid CSO to come out and because he didn't fill thirty spaces, he offered it. So we've got some staff already going, but, yeah.
Well, I would just make sure you communicate that point because when I did it, it was like four hundred dollars at the end of everything, like getting the fingerprints, getting the CSO training. And I did find there was a cheaper one. Just communicate that point.
Yeah.
So the directors meet, I think, we probably meet twice, maybe three times a month. We're currently planning our February twenty-first Partner Day. We have a presenter that we have coming, Shelley Moore. So there was, the presentation is called Support One, Support All: Designing Needs-Based Classroom Support Plans. So in this session, what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at how to anticipate and plan for the needs of students in our classrooms and schools. We will look at examples and share strategies about how to use resources in effective and efficient ways. about how to use resources in effective and efficient ways to increase access for all scholars. And some of the outcomes for the teachers that are gonna be attending is to review and consider evidence-based inclusive educational practices and strategies and support educators to respond to and plan by, plan for diverse classrooms. Also reflect on the unique and situated communities to respond to student needs in a meaningful way that maintains the integrity of diversity. And then also set goals and determine actions to shift practices to support inclusion and equity. So she's gonna be doing some presentations and breakout sessions with grade-level bands to do some of this work during the morning of February twenty-first. She's a national speaker and is amazing. So that's all the partner districts will be participating in that work. The directors are also, we're leading some work around curriculum reviews as well. So as I've mentioned in the past, we're administering in our ELA curriculum review. We're also in our PE curriculum review. So January sixth was our last meeting for PE. We finalized what our primary outcomes are gonna be, so what our priority standards will be for the K eight curriculum, actually K twelve curriculum, but for our district K eight. Our next day of work is gonna be that afternoon, February twenty-first. On the docket for that is an HGD, HGD, Human Growth and Development Review and Revised Discussion. So updating our resources and looking at our units across the districts. And then for ELA, we have two meetings in February scheduled. Our next meeting is gonna be focusing on visioning. So and instructional practices on February third. And on February twenty-first, we're gonna be going through and looking at alignment of our priority standards and outcomes. Doing a vertical and horizontal alignment on determining what our priority standards will be. So that's our focus areas right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'm gonna move on to visitor participation. I'm six A, visitor participation. I'm not gonna read everything. If anyone has anything to add, please. Board members, not, okay, great.
Wait, is anyone online?
Oh, that's right, online. That's the second time that I've done that, that I, that I jumped the gun on visitor participation, which is unlike me in the last two weeks, I think.
Move to adjourn.
Contrary to my general perspective. But anyways, so I apologize, but visitor participation is now closed. I'm seven A, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a little worry.
All right, then. You're looking at me bad luck. Like, are we really gonna go?
You can adjourn.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Much carries meeting adjourned. Thank you for a wonderful, obvious, thank you.